The agency. Number one, regular board meeting of the Hayward Area Shoreman Plan Agency, March twenty first, twenty twenty four. We begin at three P M. And then we'll do a roll call.
Yes, thank you. Chair Francisco Zermeño.
Thank you.
William Drady.
Here.
And Dennis Woski.
Here.
And then, of course, then you're going to ask them to roll out prospective A S P hospital trustees.
Yes, Rita Duncan.
Present.
And Eric Henchy.
Here. Devin will now announce the members of the staff present. And I think I'm going to announce the Hayward staff people present. So go ahead.
Okay, so I'm Devin Reeve, Principal Planner with the East Bay Regional Park District. We're joined today by Amanda Sanders and Eddie Willis of the East Bay Regional Park District. We're also joined by Brian Lasko of HARD and Erica Castillo of Alameda County, State of Dayton. And if you'd like to mention your staff as well.
Yes, of course, but.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Nicole Witt is with Hanson Bridget, the counsel for has legal counsel for has.
We have two outstanding members of Hayward City, Hayward City, which is Eric Pearson and Madame Richa. Hello to them. Let's see, and today's meeting is being held pursuant to the Brown Act. Board members and staff participating in person, the public can participate via phone video conference. Silence your phones, please. All right, so now we're going to put a comment, what are going to be submitted, once, two ways, and then we'll explain.
Yes, public can comment by sending an email to asanders@ebparks.org by noon on the day of the meeting. Please identify the agenda number or live via Zoom. If people would like to make a live comment during the meeting, options available through the virtual meeting platform.
That was good. We do have, I don't know if you have, but I do have a memo that says Zoom bombing. A very, very important instrument, just in case we have somebody bombing us soon. Do you want to say a little bit about it?
We don't need to.
Okay.
We have heard that one time before, but that's just in preparation for something that hopefully never happened again.
Yes.
But we could ask Amanda if there are anyone to make public comments.
There were no public comments emailed in, and there are no comments in the room, I believe. Does anybody that is in the audience, if you want to do a public comment not on the agenda, please use the raise hand function.
Okay. Let's see, we have none here, none online to now go to. Oh, okay, Devin said that three minutes are allowed, but there is no one. There are no emails that are received. And we now vote item number one, approval of the minutes, February the eighth, twenty twenty four meeting. I'll move. All right.
Sir.
All right, any comments, any public comments on the minutes? Online, nothing? All right, Devin, please take roll call.
Yes, trustee Andrew.
Yes.
Trustee Woski. Yes, chairs are many.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, so before we get up, we go to item number two, I says, welcome remarks by new age hospital chair Zermeño. I have large shoes to fill. Then my right, I will do my best, so be patient. And thank you for allowing me this opportunity. It is an honor to lead such a fantastic organization because it will help all of our residents, not just in here, but the whole area. My priorities are going to be ensuring that we pass the J P A today. And then we go out and get some more members here. So hopefully today there will be five votes instead of three. That's my, what I would like to see. And then also start getting, bringing in some money, so we can do some programs. That wonderful thing. And eventually I'll start mentioning trees. But at the moment that passed, so I wanted to kind of work trees. So now we go to item number two, that was me. Item number three, city of Hayward project updates. Taylor, please.
Hello, everybody. So the stack data center, which of the senior planner Elizabeth Blanton gave a presentation on last night. The comments you guys have made have been shared with the applicant. And they're going to be shared with the planning commission, and their planning commission is holding a work session on this item on April fourteenth, or April eleventh. And that will give the chance for the public and for the commissioners to weigh in on the public side of this.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, so we now go to item number four, which is the J P A agreement discussion. Devin do an introduction, we have Madame. Madame Witt, sorry. So with Hanson Bridget, and then we will do an action because this is an action item, very important action item. Devin.
Thank you, just a moment. Okay, we are now at the point of the agenda to consider a revised joint powers authority agreement. And I wanted to mention, and I'm really grateful to the group of technical advisory committee members who have been working so hard with us to come up with compromises needed to allow agencies to join a new has in this case, the five agencies. So as I mentioned before, has has actually looked at right now by other public agencies and cities as an established example of how you create a subregional climate adaptation public agency. And in fact, has has been recommended for a grant to study haspa's organization and its potential to grow in the future as a way of looking at other organizational models around emerging around sea level rise adaptation. So the technical advisory committee members and our legal counsel, Hanson Bridget, particularly, and her colleague Allison, have prepared this version of the J P A that's for you today. We believe that most of, if not all of the agency concerns have been addressed. We feel like we have created a good balance between the different sizes of the agencies, particularly as we consider the future when we are hoping other agencies and divisions to be side or join haspa. So as you know, one of the main remaining issues was how many agencies would be needed to adopt a motion, given that we have both standard majority voting and weighted voting built into the J P A. But thanks to HARD and Brian for suggesting that HARD would join in a different membership tier or higher tier, both accepting more dues and more responsibility, as well as a higher percentage for weighted vote. That really opened up.
Sorry.
Sorry, turns out we're fine.
It's an exception for the person.
Not except, okay, fine.
So HARD accepted. HARD accepted more responsibility with this choice, as well as a higher percentage of the weighted vote. And that's going to allow us to look at a new, what's called Schedule C, and just those slide the two more. So there have been some other changes that were made since the January version that you saw before. Specifically, weighted voting approvals must be fifty one percent or more of an approval. And that any surcharges that may be allocated, a party must agree in advance to a higher allocation. If the allocation is higher than the ones that we're going to look at in just a minute on Schedule C. So that prevents some agencies from imposing a surcharge in the future on other agencies against their will. We heard that that was really important. So we can use our meeting today to answer any questions, address any outstanding issues. And the goal is to resolve issues so that we can produce a final J P A agreement to vote at the April eleventh haspa meeting coming up in a few weeks. So with that, let me just share with you a few more details. Just to remind everybody, you do have three membership tiers based on operating budget. Alameda County is in tier one or lower tier two, and Hayward, East Bay Regional Parks and HARD are in tier three. This is what it will mean for a, with awaited voting and annual dues. If, for example, we adopt an annual budget of about a hundred thirty thousand, which we talked about, this is what the dues would be and the different percentages of weighted voting. As you can see, three agencies share twenty four percent of the vote. In the past, we had higher percentage that two agencies could move the motion. Now it would take at least three. And that's an important point. Even with weighted voting or standard voting, it would require three agencies to approve any motion. So we also.
One quick question.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, one quick clarification that I read. The person must pass away voting before the motion is even made, right?
We do want to talk about that. I thought that was a concern that Eric had as well. Let me finish this presentation, then we'll bring.
Okay, all right.
That nuance. This is the last slide here. We heard loud and clear that there's a desire for haspa to grow, and that the board wants to see staff show in a plan how haspa will grow in the future. So we will bring that plan, at least a draft, to talk with you about at the next meeting. It's got two components, one is how we're going to engage other shoreline public agencies. And the other is how do we engage the general public to get excited by haspa, learn about sea level rise and climate adaptation. So we're already committed to an Earth Day tailoring event and the Hayward Street Fairs. There'll be more, and we'll commit to those as well. So with that, now let me ask for questions. Including the one that you just had.
Which is this one first, just a clarification?
Yeah.
What are any needs?
I think that's an accurate description of how it's drafted now. The intent is to make it so that folks have a sense going into any action, whether or not something is going to be subject to weighted voting or to just the standard voting. So you see an item on the agenda, then any director could say, you know, through the chair, I would call for weighted voting on this item. And then you begin the discussion, and then you have the motions, and then the action on it. That way, this is not the only way to do it. It certainly could be, could certainly be revised. But this was, again, intended to kind of give as much foresight into how the voting is going to work rather than being a consultation where they might feel like it was from.
Yeah, so it kind of seems like we need to be ready to, in our mind, figure out, do I want way voting on this particular, on what's going to be proposed or not? This is, it's just for us to decide that.
Right, and it's not, I would say also, it's not necessarily a decision that would be subject to more than one individual's weighing in on it. One director could call for it themselves.
There we go.
And that's sufficient.
All right. Correct, so we'll start with you.
Well, that's the same, same question. That is related to what you're saying. When do they call for the way to vote? When it reads your name, it sounds like if you're going to call for way to vote it, and somebody else beats you to make it a motion, then you're raised out of it.
And sure, I mean, that is it. I think that's why I said it's the kind of thing, and rather, the chair said, this is really about knowing whether or not you want to subject an item to weighted voting from the outset. So it would need to be early on in the discussion consideration. And yet, as it's drafted now, again, it doesn't have to be this way. It could absolutely be shifted if folks think that this isn't flexible enough for when you might want to use weighted voting.
So if the chair says, I want a motion for, um, some obstacles on Friday. So if I make a motion, somebody else wants to get away, and they also, they didn't get a chance.
Right, exactly. So it would be, like I said, it would be, now we're going to move to item number four, J P A agreement discussion. And then someone would need to really jump in relatively quickly, unless, I mean, usually there's a staff presentation or something like that. So ordinarily, there's a little bit of time before something's like promoted. But you want to know that you would like to subject something to weighted voting before you're really at the point of calling for a motion.
Could it come up during the time when there's a discussion, when the motion, the second, and somebody calls for a question? Could it come up then or not?
And then you would already have the motion.
Motion, so you could.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that would be the.
So it's important to read the staff report before we actually.
Right.
And the other way, the other way that could happen, let me, let me know if this is correct. I, the chair, whoever he should be, could say, any interested in a weight motion and wait voting before the motion, emotions made? So it's in the most of all.
I don't think it's going to be a problem, I just want to make sure that we're on cam.
So it could be part of the motion, you know, the weighted would be part of the motion.
That's similar way. I move such and such under a weighted.
I mean, and similarly, if we wanted to revise the language, we could subject something to weighted voting at a later point as well.
I think that's clear.
I think all the options you presented are.
It's not right, it's stuck by it, yeah.
Yeah.
It's good, okay.
Just in addition, I, I think the way haspa works is our experts, our technical advisors are going to bring forth stuff to us. And if they think something's controversial, they'll probably whisper a dory or a. Or everybody else is here and saying, hey, you might want to go away the voting on this. It's not good for an organization. I think that's where it's going to be.
What do you mean?
Any other questions?
No, not on that one.
Oh, you're on first.
Oh. So I have a lot of little, our lawyers went over the packet, you know, a lot of little bookkeeping type of issues.
I agree with you.
Should we go with that? It's easily, it was.
No, no.
Easy, well, easy, but some of, just clarify, some more like capitalizing parties all the time, work consistently throughout the year. Paper, things like that. Should we, I was wondering if we should go down chronologically to the.
Age by page.
Page. Page four or not, that's one.
To the extent it takes time, we can do a final Q A Q C. We'll look for, you know, capitalization, everything that we can find. Again, in advance of the forward's consideration.
Okay.
And if you want to sort of defer those, then your staff will share those. You want to make sure you check into those, and then, you know, non substantive.
I mean, it's important, this is like our final draft. So you can put that in, and we're going to be kicking out the final draft.
Right.
For consideration at the next meeting.
Yeah, right. But before it goes to final draft, you know, there are things that we've done.
Okay, go page.
Page, I don't know, sure if it's on page six in the packet or page six, I think it's page sixteen in the packet. It's on page six, six of the actual graph. We wanted to see if we could add public health and whereas statement. That would be on.
And this is from you or is it for the mosquito folks?
Mosquito, okay.
I would just mention this last paragraph that's on the screen, is that sufficient?
It says in order to protect.
About the breeding habitat for mosquitoes.
Right here.
Yeah, I saw it, I count though. In order to protect.
All right. What we're looking at on. See. I'm sorry about this. One printed out, one, one, another one. Let's see, this one looks. Okay, it's the, whereas the Hayward Shoreline faces serious impact to public health infrastructure, or actually didn't have public health services, to impacts to infrastructure and resources caused by sea level rise. We want to know if we can interject public health in there as well. So to advise of, to see it as a little more.
Age, age fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen six of the.
Sixteen top.
Fifteen top.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah, sixteen top.
Or after whereas, of course.
So this change was made, this was proposed by HARD. And the idea there was that we, in the subsequent recital, so these recitals, the recitals that follow are all intended to convey the authority that each agency has to engage in haspa's business. And so each agency proposed its own recital that covers both its powers and how its powers interact with what haspa is going to be doing. And then what HARD proposed is that we use this single term climate change impacts to make sure that we're speaking about this consistently throughout these recitals. Again, to just kind of tighten this up and further align. So I think, you know, the, I guess the proposal here would be to add public health to this, to the definition of climate change impacts in some way.
And if I'm, if I'm step on something, still, let me know. Is that one that they're specifically tailored for HARD?
That one is not specifically tailored for HARD. It's just creating that definition of climate change impacts, which are then, which is then woven into all of the other definitions. So we're using the same.
Okay, so then harder downward talks about mosquito, I know.
Right.
I think that's where we.
That's the one that your agency proposed, and that's the.
Right.
That's where it, you know, demonstrates your powers and how that intersects with haspa.
So, yeah, our, our, our lawyer said it was on that one, but she said, um, it's important that to acknowledge the public health aspect of climate change, the definition of climate change, so.
Would you want it on the first part to say like, where the Hayward Shoreline faces serious impacts to infrastructure, resources, and public health caused by sea level rise?
I don't think it would matter so much. Yeah, I think she just wanted to make sure that public health is recognized as a component of problem, kind of change.
Is there a major objection to this?
No, no, I don't think so. Generally, it's about incorporating.
General payment, that's fine.
All right. Uh, replace some board members with trustees on page eleven.
Can I ask, it might, you know, if you all want to just send us these, we incorporated the vast majority of this kind of feedback from, from tax numbers and council. And so if you all want to just share that, if there's anything that we have concerns about, you know, we could certainly follow up with your council.
Yeah.
But, I mean, nothing new very so far, it sounds concerning.
Yeah, I got it, well, I'll, I'll be here for midnight otherwise, so.
All right. Okay, so is that okay, you sending her?
I can do that.
And Devin.
If there's anything that.
But I think anything substantial we should talk, we should talk about, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let me run that here on. If it's capitalizing, you'll see that later on. Um, on five C, we might want to add unanimously before. Five C, section five C. Add unanimously for.
What's your name?
Yeah.
Understood, this is.
It is, I, I think we have to imply because any agency wouldn't be signing on to be a member of haspa unless they agree. And so it's, I think it's, it would be a necessary requirement.
Yeah, it's understood.
Section ten B. Whereas financial obligations are split according to Schedule C.
And sorry, B?
D.
D.
The reinstatement part?
I'm sorry.
It's right there at the top of the screen. It's actually said that they're split equally. Amongst the parties.
That's ten D.
And changes to equally instead of in according to Schedule C. So our lawyer have concerns about that, where it wasn't consistent with the way all the other parts are split. Yeah.
I don't quite understand what the problem is. So what, what is the problem, or what's the objection?
I think it's a question, and I've seen this before in, you know, different types of joint powers agreements. So when we started this and we were drafting this, it's under the assumption each party would be contributing equally into dues. And then we also shifted to this tier dues voting structure. And so the question now is, if there is a termination of the agreement and all of the assets, to be said there are any, are liquidated, should those assets be divided equally among the parties? Or should they be divided among the parties based on Schedule C? And I think that is, you know, that's a.
Okay.
At this point, I don't believe there are really any assets that would be liquidated. So I don't think it's a practical issue that you all would encounter in the near future. But, you know, to the extent it's a point of concern, it's worth thinking about. I mean, you're going to have this Schedule C, but as you're adding new agencies, it's likely going to continue to shift. So the financial obligations and contribution levels of different agencies are going to shift over time. But, you know, you could certainly consider an allocation based on Schedule C. You could consider an allocation that's equal. You could develop an allocation at the time of dissolution or termination of another option.
I prefer that option. And whenever we start discussing termination, then we'll come up with some kind of an agreement. Is that okay? Okay, but yeah, but right now it's not necessary. We're, we're getting married today. I, let's, let's have it be.
Yes, that. I want to do that. On section twelve, A and B might be reversed on there. Let's see. That was the part about. Boundaries and services, this part, this is one way, and then another part is listed in a different way.
Okay, well, we can certainly, now we're going to look if I.
If you ask, let's see. On section eight B. Some due, says, how will grants additional agencies affect the budget? So if we're making dues for the members, is that off of the operating budget? Well, if we're dividing up our dues, but pretty much if you have a budget, you have a lot of other money in there. Is that considered part of the budget or not? Love it, Charlotte.
Is that scenario where we've created a budget? We've adopted a budget, but then after we've adopted the budget, we get a grant, let's say, for expansion of one program of haspa. Is the question, would the dues go down in the next year? Or is the question, would a grant reduce the amount of dues that each agency would pay?
I'm not very sure how, um, I, I, so we got the hundred thirty thousand dollar operating budget. That's kind of where the target is, my mind. So, and of course, it's going to go up. But, so that'll be where we divide the member agencies' fees, none of that, obviously, that's correct. Not the monies that are incremental grants, it's all worth.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, grants ideally will be for specific programs that we apply for to do A, B, or C. And the operating budget would stay the same or go up as needed, as we add more agencies or consultants.
Are you leaving Rita?
Oh, I'm going to throw a bomb in it, so it's okay. Take as much time as you want.
Would you like to go up the bombers? That, that, turn that one. So you guys are doing a lot of this, I already been taken care of. Just one of my ups here. Oh, on the dues table, how will feature when new members come in? Does that need to be adjusted now, or is that when only when new members join? For example, the percentages that we all have. Oh, I'm interested in another tier three comes in. What, what happens to that table?
I think a new party would be at an advance to the agreement and would require renegotiation of this table.
So that's.
Haspa has maximum flexibility when it comes to how it wants to, how it might want to renegotiate this. We've given some thought to what that could look like. So one option would be if you all wanted to stick with a structure similar to this. This is based on agencies operating budgets, right? So if you had a new agency coming in, and it is a tier three agency, one option would be to say, wonderful, please come join haspa. Step number one is pay the required dues for this year for a three, a tier three agency. And they would get dropped in temporarily as tier three and given twenty four percent, which would take our hundred percent at the bottom there up to a hundred and twenty four percent.
Right.
And then what we would do is we would basically adjust all of the different allocations in proportion to their allocation of that hundred percent. So that each agency's amount would go down a little bit until we got back to a hundred percent. So we did the math, and we have a table summarizing, but that's one option you all could consider. You also could opt for an entirely different steamer structure at that point, that is, it's kind of.
That's a much more logical one, the one you just explained.
And the one that came from my.
That table you showed me, that one, really? Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah. That can be, that's rather bomb.
All right, but can we cut in on Eric Steele?
Yeah.
So Eric, so these, all these things your lawyer brought up, is, are these going to be deal breakers for?
I don't think so. Well, I think there, there, um, you know, it couldn't claim that. Because we're sitting here trying to get an agency and then we're going to carry it on. And if she's going to play this, whatever, whatever the deal is, I know I demand that we. I, I, I try to, which, I'm sorry. I, I don't want to cry it on. Um, I'll forward the suggestion up. Alright.
Thank you. Rita?
Okay, Rita, um, it's, it's not a new bomb.
Okay.
Um, my agency, we just talked about it a lot, the board meeting, at our last board meeting. Not yesterday, but last week, that we could not sign up to eighteen percent of, of a, of a budget, operating budget. That we would prefer having a flat amount of dues. And the increase, you know, could be a sound, but the increases could be correlated with the cost of the increases. But that we did not feel comfortable finding of our district to be responsible. At that time, it was like nineteen percent of whatever, eighteen percent of a budget, operating budget. Because a hundred and thirty thousand is. It's not, this is me speaking, not realistic. Not for the budget for the magnitude that we're prepared to do. The other, and I'm sure the tax about this, with our attorney, the other issue is, um, is, is, again, we're, we have one point two miles of the shore. And we feel that, you know, Alameda has that control and in the same, you know, should really be a part of it.
Well, that last one, we're, we're going to work on that. And the other point about the budget is just to start a song.
Well, you know, if you said, um, the annual dues was, uh, you know, the twenty four thousand or whatever, that's fine. But to say that we will be locked into being responsible for certain percentage of the, of the budget. The board members are not comfortable. And this is not new information to you, Devin, I'm not even, will be drawn down this path without, um, you know, being transparent. The other things, again, well, at least there's great interest again, they want to do it. I sent them again the master plan. And, um, we're not selfish thinking that we're only responsible for our one point two miles. But, um, that's where.
Response from you and then from us, see, wait for the responses.
Yeah, we did consider the idea that a consumer price index cap on dues could be considered. Um, because I heard that from the meeting. I do have a slide that kind of addresses it, so, I mean, at least so we can explain what, um, our position was on that question alone, um, at the same time respecting that the, um, the role of HASP is something that we're, um, all interested in, but not at the expense of losing potential members. So, let me get this here. Okay, so the proposal basically is that there be a cap of annual dues. The idea was use consumer price index. So we don't recommend it, and here's why. Today, CPI is three percent. That would mean that in twenty twenty five, HASP dues would either be fourteen hundred dollars more than they currently are. They currently are forty eight thousand for the group. Or if we do get the budget that we're proposing, which is hundred and thirty thousand, that would mean in twenty twenty five, we can only increase it. We can only increase the budget in the next year by four thousand dollars. If we were to use CPI as well. So to us, that is not flexible enough. We don't know what year two's budget will be, but we know it would likely need to be more than, you know, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, just as you were saying. So we think it's, it's not wise at this time to put a cap. But maybe in the future, perhaps the board wanted that, that would be something to do. We did, we did definitely seriously consider it.
Okay.
Well, the, you know, the other thing is, is to raise the price of admission. And then consider what you see. You know, it's, I think the, um, the amount that we were, when we drafted, like, we would think that twenty four thousand, you know, increase it to thirty or whatever. But the, the issue is we are locking into having who is responsible for the potential amount.
Any question, any comments on this? Luke? It's kind of new to me, uh, I mean, it's going to grow and. Well, my goal, my goal is to have this thing work by limiting, if we're not, some people aren't committed to pay up. We're not going to get anywhere. So I would just, no, I, I respect Oreloma, but I would respect the plan, Oreloma. Go ahead with what the plan we have and if you want to draw, that's your prerogative. But we can go ahead, I think, as an agency and go ahead because we're going to hear some reports and we've already got some grants. And we've already got some money. You gotta invest a little money to get a little money, in my opinion.
And my thought is that eventually we will, we will have one member. And that will mean lesser dues for everybody, not just for Oreloma or City Hayward, you know? And that's the positiveness of this particular project. The future, that's, that looks very good. And the first people are going to be this company of Alameda, hopefully. So we're very close to getting them. So if anything, we're thinking about just one year. Anything comes from you? No? Yes?
I'll just put in that there are like protections for agencies that are worried about doing increases. In matters like in the, and the, and the board can decide to have lower dues for an agency you're in charge of, or you could always leave that.
I, I don't think we're at first to dues increasing. It's being locked into being responsible for a certain percentage of an operating budget. Period, you know? And that's, that's where, and this is not, it may be new to you, but it, I've, I've been bringing this up. It's not a new issue for our board. And I respect, we don't have to go on that you saying, because we, we, we've always known that. But the fact that I'm here and I come every month means that we are interested.
That's good.
And we're also, you know, one of the persons I said is, you know, we need to get more people and protect, not people, but agencies, particularly. Definitely. And I said, and I, and I was, you know, and it's like, you know, I've been communicating that since I've been on the board.
So the bomb is not that big, but, okay. Luke, anything for?
I'm not sure I compromise that, I mean, uh, you know, it's.
On the JPA. It comes with a comment from a mosquito or Oreloma, the comments on JPA. You okay?
I'm okay with where it is.
And so, once again, I think we've been spinning our wheels for two years trying to get members. If it doesn't work, we should go in different directions. I think we need to get a JPA, be a real agency and go out and get some of those grants that are available. Everybody understands seal rise, understands climate change, there's money flowing. Let's take advantage of it, or rather sit here and spin our wheels and spin our wheels and spin our wheels. And then if we, I mean, I, I love Oreloma. If in three years we are successful, come join us. The dues will be higher, but come join us then.
Dennis, with all respect, we have been saying that, you know, we're going to get more members, but that hasn't happened, this has happened here. And, and the push has happened within the last two months, really. So it's, it's like.
Well, I think, I think your agency is different than it was before. I mean, before it was a debate society and now it's sort of an action society, you know, say hit action. And, um, you know, it's, it's kind of a different animal. I mean, it's what we're trying to do. So in a sense, we're a pioneer of a, of a agency that can actually take some actions. And, um, so I don't know, I mean, you know, to be part of that. And I think once we are, once we do establish a track record, if you will, if you want to join.
I think so too.
And, uh, so maybe the pioneers make, uh, you know, a little bit more sacrifice and more flexibility. Eventually, I think it'll be part of, you know, it'll be, uh.
I do have a couple of comments. So it's a great job on T C C that people drafted this, it's excellent. Thank you for the job you did. On the twenty two pages worth, I couldn't memorize the whole thing, but I tried. Uh, let's see, uh, good on the powers of the JPA. On page thirty, uh, on the package has a different sized font. I don't know if that's a typo or a mistake, so maybe clear that up. Uh, on page twenty one, there were, uh, well, that was a way voting, so I like, I like it. Um, and then over on page sixteen, not of the JPA, but page sixteen of the staff report. So it mentions, uh, hard, it mentions the city of Hayward. Uh, not sorry, yeah, it mentions mosquitoes hard in Hayward, but it doesn't mention East Bay or Oreloma. There's a whereas on, uh, there's a whereas on, this is page sixteen. And I'm just wondering, the page sixteen and seventeen, uh, the bottom page sixteen, uh, there's the mosquitoes. On the top of seventeen, there's hard. Uh, mid page seventeen, there's the city of Hayward. But I was looking for Oreloma and East Bay.
So they would have been the ones listed above. I mean, I can, I would have to go back to see exactly which ones.
I was just wondering why they were left out.
Yeah, they weren't left out, they just maybe didn't list their names in the specific recital, but we could point that. It's in the recitals from each agency's council, yeah. As they provide the.
Alright, let's see, and, and in my mind, this is an excellent instrument. When, I think we should go forward with it. Uh, we're going to have members, I believe in, uh, possibly even this year. I'm having a good conversation with supervisor, at some of the guests on it. And she says, yes, Francisco, we're on it. I am on it, so she's on it. Alright, so let's see, any final comments before we actually vote on?
I'm ready to move it right now, but I have to bring this up, just as a point of history, you know, as a member. We just have Citizens Advisory Committee. I understand why we left it. Was there any thought of considering that one more time again? Let's do it in the future.
Yeah. That's on the new.
I had, for, for new people, it was, there was a Citizens Advisory Committee, a local activist. Instrumental in saving the shoreline, but then they were also instrumental in being at meetings like this to say, I want you to do a forty page report on some type of wildlife on the shore. And they were ordering the staff or. I think in the future it might be well.
I, I've already done it for the agenda. Alright, the G, I, I, I think we're ready. Any final comments from the mosquitoes?
No. I apologize for, we have many kind of comments, but, uh, no.
No, uh, my instructions is that if we're not, if we don't like it, we don't have to do it.
Okay, alright, good. Any last comments?
Well, I'd like to motion if I could. Um, if I could just say, cheers to Manu, we don't actually need a motion right now, we're going to accept.
That is correct.
edits, it's a prepared clean copy. I would just like to take a moment to thank both Rita Duncan and Jimmy Gang, the general manager of Oreloma. Because Jimmy has really been instrumental almost for a solid year with us. And I don't know if he's on the team right now, but if you.
No, he's recording.
Um, he's been, you know, personally very just open and available and exploring different opportunities and ideas for this JPA. And I personally really appreciate it.
I'll make sure that I communicate that too.
Yeah, and your participation.
I'm only following the script. The script says, what actions need a motion to approve? Skip that.
That's a typo.
Yeah, so, so that'll show up in the April meeting. So if anything, so let's see. It seems we have general consensus that you are going to forward some of your recommendations to, to, to our attorney, Nicole. Uh, Rita's going to go over and talk to her folks and let her know that we will have a four new members and the dues will be reduced accordingly.
Four new members?
Five, six, just sweep top them into it. Yeah, we're working, we're working, the ones you mentioned were three. And let's see, counting, so that's four new members and then is that the, uh, so, uh, just, I mean, Sheila Young will go, oh, I love you, I love Seramano too. Alright, uh, so that's the general consensus of the group?
Yes. Can I ask, is, is there a timeline on this? So I, I, is there a timeline? Is there going to be a final date when we get approvals from all of the agencies that we anticipate? I mean, is, I thought it was, we were going to prove this today. It was going to go back to all of our boards and directors and then the next time we met, we would have a, this in place, but.
What's going to happen is, um, we will, we will bring a clean copy. We needed this meeting to find out if, if there were any substantial changes. So now that we know there are not, we will have a clean copy to vote on April eleven. Here at HASP Board, and every, all the four member agencies will bring it back to their board between April twelfth and June thirty.
We will probably.
And then when we meet again in July, then we'll have a budget and we'll have a new HASP.
Very exciting. And hopefully by then we'll have community value.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Right, anything from staff? No? No? Alright, I took a big step forward today. Now, one small step for mankind, one large step for HASP. Alright, let's see, item number five, old business. Uh, I, I wanted to divide the agenda so that I have old business and new business under old business. Recruitment efforts for additional trustee agencies. I would like to see a plan of sorts by our staff. List the ones that Rita has mentioned, maybe a couple others, and let's see if we have a viable plan. Okay, we need the, 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 uh, how do we attack the supervisors? How do we attack the mud folks? Mr. Andrade is going to go talk to supervisors, then he's going to talk to the, to the mud people. And then we're going to do a now go talk somebody else. And then community engagement activities, I think that's important. Um, I did send you a note about Simbo de Mayo, maybe you wanted, it's complimentary, so yeah, that goes. And that's kind of in the works. We need to tell folks that we exist and we need to tell them what we are doing or are planning to do. Alright, so no motions approved. Item number six is new business. Um, are there any updates by the trustees agency? Uh, let's see, uh, do we, so this is where we would place the Citizens Advisory Committee as new business. So that, put that in under new business for next having me. Anything else, anything that you would like to add on for new business? Mosquito? No? Rita?
Are you guys going to the dinner tonight?
I am, I will be, I'll see you. And, and any new business? No, any new business? Besides the Citizens Advisory.
Yeah, I mean, well, first I agree with you a hundred percent. I think with, once we get this formulated, we can take a JPA. Uh, I would love to suggest that, I'm hoping you're going to announce, but hopefully, maybe it's a rumor, but we got some grants. I think that's what we do, we say, here's our master plan, here's our JPA, here's how we function. We have a staff, we have a budget, we are going to go forward obtaining these grants and we're going to make the Hayward shoreline better place. And I think we can sell it. Uh, I would love to go, uh, I love to trumpet the fifty grand and get new members. I think we can do it when we have these types of things in place.
Yeah.
So, second, everything you've said, as far as, and I would like to see, I, I suggest that, I, this might be a little controversy, but I love the idea of it. And that is soon, soon, it's going to be. But darn it, I wish we could have used, um, I mentioned last week. So you suggested Taylor that the Hayward City Hayward is going to hear comments on the three hundred tall, three hundred foot tall skyscraper that we. New.
New, but, 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 but. The staff data center. There will be a work session on, with the Hayward Planning Commission on April eleven.
Okay, so I think we have moved ourselves into the position, unfortunately, or fortunately, as the case may be. As, I don't know what's going to go on there, but I think people should, and I, I, it happens in other agencies. This is the place, and I don't know if it's the Hayward City staff's job to do this, I'm sure it's not. But I think we should come as HASP and say, hey, we protect the Hayward shoreline. No matter what you say, whatever you do in that hundred foot building, you're ruining a beauty shed. You're, you're, you're bringing stuff that wasn't on that shoreline to what's there now. So it's going to happen, we're all, we, okay, I believe in progress, but we want a pound of flesh. You're going to be seen, the first view out of the Hayward shoreline interpretive center. You're going to be seen, the first view out of the Hayward shoreline interpretive center, correct me if I'm wrong, because I.
It's right, it'll be on the ninety two. And just to clarify, no decision has been made, this is, this will be a work session, but it's like, thing, and your, the Haspa comments are going to be included as part of it. But we recommend that if you, if Haspa feels like they want to share even more comments, they can come and make other comment at the meeting, or you could send a letter. And I think our planning commissioners would appreciate hearing from Haspa itself about the project.
Well, I'm not prepared to do it, because I'm not technical staff people, because I don't know what's going on. I mean, I mean, I asked what the cost of the project was. I'm sure that at some point, they're going to tell us what the cost of the project is. If it's a hundred million dollar project, I would suggest that they probably be willing to give up ten million, five million, whatever the number is. But there's a lot of improvements that could be done at the Hayward shoreline interpretive center. There's a lot of trail enhancements to do what we are doing. And if they see an agency like ours, which I think will have some, whatever, juice, or whatever it is we are hope to have, and makes them have some influences, I think this is a great place to start.
Thank you.
And, you know.
It's being on the community and actually showing who we are.
Exactly, we're out here, it's our first act. And, and so, if we get other agencies to join, oh geez, you do have some, got a letterhead, and you're, you're making comments at board, in meetings, and I shouldn't say this, but the experience in the regional park is, because we always get cash out of people when they want to ruin our, ruin our.
People, if you don't want people to see the building, we can have, we can recommend that they put a lot of trees right in front of the building. So instead of seeing the buildings.
There is, I, I don't, I have no desire to ruin progress, but I do know that, you know, the salt marsh harvest mouse, and we apologize, and the almy whip snake. I've never seen any of those, but darn it, we get a lot of money out of a lot of people for saying you're ruining their habitat. So I, I don't feel bad about getting a pound of flesh out of these folks.
Taylor, could you confirm the time of that study session?
Seven, yeah.
Okay, so just to be clear, Haspa will have a board meeting here in this room at three o'clock on that same day. And then at seven PM, you could, we could put a agenda, and you could go to the city hall, and, and say the night, and, and make a statement. Cool. Just coincidentally, but is it scheduled by the planning commission at all? I mean, besides the study session?
The work session?
Right.
Is the only, like, meeting that's scheduled, and it don't depend on what, you know, the planning commission says. And if the planning commission, you know, wants to require a higher bar, and the applicant is not willing to go to that higher bar, it's likely that the applicant will walk away, or they will make changes to their project. That's the point of this work session, is to really like, tell, have the applicant hear from the decision makers what the city wants in terms of to allow this entitlement. And so, if the planning commission makes recommendations and says they'll only support it because if you have X, Y, and Z, you know, it's very likely that the applicant will walk away. That's happened with other projects where the planning commission or the city council have asked for items, and then, yeah, and people have walked away because they don't want to do what the city is asking for.
Well, we will go, Rita.
And Eric has a comment.
Eric, please?
I just want to add that, just to give a sense of the overall timeframe for the equitable process for this project. I was talking with Elizabeth, the planner, earlier today. The California Energy Commission is actually the lead agency for the SEQA process. They're going to be doing an environmental impact report. Anyway, that, that's going to be a long process in itself. So we're anticipating like nine to twelve months, maybe, before we get to the point of a, an actual planning commission meeting where this project could be approved. For this, but, yeah.
And we're still at the very beginning.
So you're suggesting that maybe on the April eleventh meeting, we would get a Haspa letterhead, which is, oh, yeah, we get that, and suggest we have concerns. We're concerned about protection of our shoreline, we're concerned of your share, all the normal stuff, and that we would expect, maybe, maybe some, it's going to be, yes.
Yeah, I think they would value a public letter if we, you guys are not willing to participate in person, or someone from our staff could go in in person.
Well, I'm willing, with Eric saying that it's, it's going to be a long, I mean.
Yeah, it's going to be a long process. We are still at the beginning, but the point of scheduling a work session so early to the beginning is so that the developers know upfront what the requirements will be.
We just provide mitigation opportunities.
Yeah.
We provide.
I think, yeah, there is lots of interest from agents, the departments in the city to like request additional things. And then I, and Elizabeth has heard your guys' concerns, allowed to clear this.
Partners do, that's what partners do.
So, we'll, we'll draft a letter?
Yes, I could prepare a draft.
Okay, good.
That we'll bring to the April eleventh meeting, based on your comments.
And we'll see it at the next meeting. So, so let's see, new business grant, please include grants on the new business, and then also flex, flexing muscles level. Who are you and where do you study?
Hi, I'm Deanna, I work with Eric, I'm the director of the search division, and I see San Barbara.
Yeah. There's no fine for you, just because there was going to be a ten hour fine, that's just your gouge, I will give no fine. Okay, let's see, so that means that we are now on agenda setting for the next meeting. Devin?
I think we've got a packed agenda for April now, and, and I've got a recommendation, and we have a presentation from someone from Long Shoreline. That's something Brian has asked. One Shoreline is the special district in San Mateo County fighting sea level rise adaptation projects, promoting them. And they've got interesting governing structures, so we'll reach out to them and have them come to the major.
Excellent.
All right, I just wanted to say, different announcement.
Yes.
I was listening to H three D radio, and they had a big feature on Oraloma, was on the lady, which is kind of, it's very interesting.
Yeah, EPA was, was here yesterday. That's San Francisco, um, chapter.
That was your announcement.
Yes, we might, yeah, I just, and I, I wish I could say it's a, it's available at H three D, I guess it is somewhere.
Yeah. We've got a lot of news.
Uh, no.
No announcements?
Thank you, I forgot what's going on.
All right.
Well, yeah, to piggyback on, we, the EPA was visiting Oraloma yesterday, a lot of the news coverage. And Jimmy's going to share all the links, and I can send it to you on the, in the last. You'd be surprised how many of the individuals have never visited a waste management facility and.
Interesting, very nice guy.
Guidelines and laws about it.
Did they find gold in Oraloma?
Yes.
That's why it's gold.
Well, not, not enough to join this.
Of course, more gold. Announcements? Mosquitoes, and make sure you, you're opening all your pasta bands at home. Yards and all, you know.
Yeah.
Announcements from the staff?
You had your turnover, Hennessy.
Oh, no, I just, I was, I was going to ask Garrett, but I'll ask him offline.
No, go ahead.
Do you, Eric, do you ever give reports on mosquito, especially West Nile virus? I, I know you do, but would that be appropriate for you? I'm, I'm wondering, wasn't, I didn't hear about the one that happened in Coyote Hills.
Yeah, right, I can, if you like. We, we did find the West Nile virus in Union City, recently, in, in mosquito. It was a bird a while back, but this is, I don't know. So, but our, our crews in Beijing, they're out there, and they, when they, when they find a mosquito, they bring all the people from all over the county to that location and trap. We wouldn't bring, we have a small organization, but they do a lot of immediate responses. Again, a lot of, so to the spread. It didn't have to spray, which were they very selfless to do, up in that, I mean, Dublin, wasn't it? They very seldom spread, goals, a lot of spread. If you like, I can bring more specific things.
I'd love, especially, you know, along the shoreline.
That's why we.
Couple of spikes would be nice, maybe a picture of a dead mosquito.
Which was kind of.
Yeah, well, it's one of those that carries the, the, that's a little different than the one I signed on the tour.
Uh, there are many different, yeah, we have a lot in there.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Anyone on, on salting crackers, some samples?
Okay, any announcements from over there? Do you call it, any announcement from you?
No, thank you all very much.
Thank you for being here. Sounds, say, I'm sure. Eric, an announcement? No? Okay, the meeting's adjourned at four o'clock, and we'll see you next month. See you tonight.